Good evening, I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for January 13, 2014 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is the Awards and Recognition. Dr. Lathan?
We can get Lana Myers to come up from the Peoria Federation of Teachers and present our award tonight.
Excuse me, I'm gonna try to get close. Hopefully you can hear me, yes? Okay. I'll stay to the side. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and/or reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winners' principals Kathy Trimble and Renee Andrews, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of this month's winner. And this is actually December's winner tonight. Our nominator of this month's winner is Suzie Springman, if you'll come up Suzie. And this month's, December's, Peoria's Finest Teacher is Michelle Minders at Treewind Day Treatment. Congratulations, Michelle, come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce you to Michelle Minders. My name is Suzie Springman, I'm an interventionist/teacher at Day Treatment, and that's located at Treewind. I am new to District 150, but a veteran teacher. Coming into District 150, as most of you know, there are lots of different programs, and our students are very much a variety at Day Treatment. I came into the district, and one of the first people that I met was Michelle. She welcomed me aboard at Day Treatment and has gone above and beyond, helping not only myself, our new Vice Principal, and other teachers that are at our school. Michelle not only does that, she's a primary contact for our high school students to ensure their graduation or placement when they're brought to us. She not only does that, she wand students at times in mornings, she is our lunch lady, she is our Skyward Person. So Michelle does everything in our building, and I feel very blessed being able to work with her. Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the staff at Day Treatment. Without them, I could not do all that I do. And the staff includes the administration, the security guards, the cafeteria workers, the behavioral attendants or monitors, teachers, the teacher assistants, the social workers, a psychologist, the children's home workers, and the list goes on and on. Without them, we could not do our job effectively. At Day Treatment, we are there to help our students, to achieve the best education that they can. I would also like to thank my family and friends that are here tonight. Without them, I would not be standing here. So once again, thank you to District 150, to my family, to my friends, and to the staff at Day Treatment. I enjoy going to work every single day, even when I have to wand or do bus duty, it is a joy. So thank you again, and have a great evening.
Thank you, and congratulations. We may want to rearrange that microphone there because it's pretty awkward. Can we put that next to the speaker's podium, or some other way that that would work better? That might be better, yeah. And then hopefully people will be able to use that more effectively. Thank you. The next portion of our agenda is announcements, and tonight we have two announcements listed on our agenda. We'll follow up with any further announcements from the board members at the conclusion of these two presentations. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Carl Cannon and his other guests and dignitaries to come to the podium and to introduce the Don't Start program. And CEO Cannon, if you would please, sir, introduce your honored guests.
Well, thank you, Board and Board Members. I'm gonna introduce our Mayor, Jim Artis, who will introduce the rest of the team.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Mr. President, and Board Members, and Superintendent Lathan, and staff, thank you for taking a few moments tonight to hear a little bit more about this exciting new addition to what we've been doing over the last year and a half with Don't Shoot. We're gonna give you a little bit of information, and answer any questions we can, and be very conscious of the fact that you have an important meeting tonight, and have a lot of important business to do. What I'd like to do first is introduce the members of the Don't Shoot Governing Board Executive Team. I have with me this evening our U.S. Attorney, Jim Lewis, our State's Attorney, Jerry Brady, Chief Steve Settings Guard from the Peoria Police Department, our Sheriff, Mike McCoy, our Assistant United States Attorney, Tate Chambers, and of course, everybody knows CEO Cannon, and his team, his elite team that's here as well. Before we make a real brief introduction about Don't Shoot and Don't Start, I would like the opportunity to ask everyone to welcome someone we all know, who does a lot of hard work for us down in Springfield, who would like to say a few words to us as well, and that's our State Representative for the 92nd District, Jahan Gordon Booth.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My comments will be brief. About six or seven months ago, I had a meeting with Carl, Captain Edelman, State's Attorney, Jerry Brady, as well as Chief Settings Guard, and we're talking about some of the things that are going on in our community, and what we could do to sort of curb some of the violence, particularly with our younger students. And unfortunately, because of many state cutbacks and other issues with budgetary concerns, many schools have not had the ability to spend money investing in our children, particularly in after-school programs. And we all know CEO Cannon, we all know that he comes well recommended with the good work that he does for the children in our community. And so after this meeting, I had the easy job, and that is finding the money. Well, I shouldn't say easy job. The real job and the real hard work is the work that they'll be doing, it's the work that you all do every day, in ensuring that our children are being educated, and that's happening in a safe environment. So after the completion of this meeting, my task was simply to find the funds within the public safety budget in order to provide the dollars to allow our community workers to do what it is that they do best. And with that being said, we were able to be successful, to be able to allocate $200,000 for the youth of our community in order to try to create a better environment so that they can be, they can learn in a much better fashion because they'll see the vision, and part of that vision will be given to them by the after-school programming, the work that'll be done, not only after school, but also on the weekends and throughout the summer. This is something that obviously a lot of schools around the state just simply don't have the ability to invest in because of many of the budgetary concerns, and we're just proud to be able to be here and stand with you all today, working in a collaborative fashion to be able to do this for our young people.
Thank you, Representative Gordon Booth. So what we're gonna do really quickly this evening, Mr. President, is real quick snapshots from everyone on the executive team, and then Carl's really going to go into just a little bit more detail on his exciting initiative, which is Don't Start, first of the kind, first of its kind in the country. Before they all speak, I need to apologize for Chief Settings Guard, who should've went to Don't Ski. He's getting around okay, though. As you all know, the Don't Shoot initiative was started a little over a year and a half ago, because our community, like the people sitting behind us this evening, people in our community said, "We've had enough gun violence in Peoria, we're not gonna take this anymore." So through the work of the U.S. Attorney's Office, and David Kennedy, and some people in Washington, D.C., we undertook what the community now knows as Don't Shoot. Some of the speakers are gonna go into more detail about it, but the unique aspect of it is it brings in the U.S. Attorney's Office, the State's Attorney's Office, our city and county police departments, and then there's a whole new branch that's evolving right now, which is really gonna be the most important part of that. They call it the moral voice of the community, and that really is the piece of this that's gonna make it work. And that part is evolving right now, more information about that will be coming out. But as you listen to the other speakers tonight, it's important to understand how hard it is sometimes to get people representing different facets of law enforcement and State's Attorneys, U.S. Attorney's Office, to work together on something that's the first time it's ever happened in this community. So we appreciate your attention, this is gonna be really quick, and then Carl's gonna give detail on Don't Start. Thank you.
Good evening. Tate Chambers from the U.S. Attorney's Office, and thank you very much for having us here. This is a really exciting night. We're excited about Don't Shoot. We're following a game plan with Don't Shoot that communities across the country have followed, and been successful. Outreach to the community, like the mayor said, involving the community, letting the community be part of Don't Shoot. Outreach to the gang members, because when we can convince them to put down the guns, then we've made a huge achievement. We're following the game plan that's been set out successfully across the nation, but tonight we're gonna talk about something that's not part of the game plan, and this is what we're really excited about. The genius of Carl Cannon to come up with Don't Start, to reach into the schools and actually try to get the kids to understand not to become gang members at an early age before they go down that path. That's so exciting. Nobody else has done this across the nation. We'll be the first, and I'm certain with this team here, we're gonna be successful. Chief?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the mayor, I would just say that the name Settings Guard is Norwegian, so ask me not to ski would be a little odd, but I want to just kind of briefly explain this whole focus deterrence concept and Don't Shoot as quickly and as succinctly as I can. It's really a way to reduce gun violence by actually putting fewer men in prison. It's about focusing on only those most notorious and most violent gangs, making an example out of members of a particular gang, and then using that example to send a message to the others around the city who are involved in similar lifestyles, sending a strong message about the consequences of the behavior, and then offering them an opportunity to get out. One of the things, though, that we've learned is that even for those that have an honest desire to escape the gang lifestyle, once they're fully entrenched, it's extremely difficult despite their efforts, as much as you would expect with a drug addict or an alcoholic. It's very difficult to escape the clinches of the gang lifestyle. The beauty of what Carl's idea was, was cutting off the supply chain, because we sat in a room, and Carl said, "What happens to the next generation?" Because we all know, today's gang members are grooming, mentoring, and recruiting tomorrow's. And we need something in place that reaches tomorrow's potential gang members and prevents them from becoming the next victims of gang violence. Thank you.
I'm Jim Lewis, I'm the United States Attorney, and I simply want to say thank you. There's a vision here, and I think the vision has been explained to you, that law enforcement is actually saying in this community, "We'd like to deter and prevent and reduce the problems that we have to deal with." And so we do have some people already out of the schools and out on the streets, and we have to try to reach them. But also, this is what today is about, and it's part of the vision. And to me, the pleasure is that your Superintendent appreciates the vision, Board Member Ross appreciates the vision, your State Representative appreciates it, everybody appreciates it, and you all are joining into the vision. What if we take the students that might be heading in that direction, and we engage with them in a program that would keep them from heading in the wrong direction? I have had the pleasure of meeting all kinds of people in Peoria who share this vision, and I'm delighted to be here this evening with you, because you seem to share it as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mike McCoy, and I'm the Sheriff of Peoria County. I just want to stress to the Board and the taxpayers, one of the residual effects of the Don't Shoot program and how it affects us all. The jail at Peoria County is the only jail in Peoria County, as we all know. Everyone comes there, for every city in the county. We have 500 cells. We had an average daily population of about 520 for the last five or six years. Since the Don't Shoot program has started within the last eight months, for the first time in almost eight years, our average daily population has fallen to under 400. That's 600 meals a day, 600 meals a day we're not feeding people. People are getting the concept of the Don't Shoot program and the Don't Start program. I just encourage everyone to take a look, not only at what the program's doing in the reduction of violence in the community, but also the benefit that we all have as taxpayers. Thank you.
My name's Jerry Brady. Thank you for having us. The beauty of Don't Shoot, or the logic, the academic logic of what's known as focus deterrence, which will also be a part of the Don't Start logic, is that in our criminal justice system, we deal with four aspects. We deal with retribution, revenge, rehabilitation. Those three common principles of the criminal justice system all occur after a crime has been committed. To the contrary, deterrence or focus deterrence, the logic upon which Don't Start and Don't Shoot are built upon, focuses on individuals in convincing them not to commit crime. And when successful, communities thrive, individuals thrive, economies thrive, school districts thrive. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to present tonight.
All right. You know, when we, this team of men and ladies, when we started on the endeavor, it was under the buzzword, "intervention." Well, tonight, out of 70 cities in the United States of America who are successfully using Don't Shoot, we're the first city to have a program based on prevention, that's really a real effort at it, called Don't Start. So what it means for us is working with you to take the people who spoke before you, heroes, and really release our kids to some superheroes. And that's the educator that stood here before, that's this young lady, that's Ryan Morrison. Let's hear from Ms. Andrews, who's heard and given us vision on how we could use the Don't Start concept. Renee?
Good evening. I wanted to quickly piggyback on what Chief Settings Guard said. Being the Principal of Treewind, in what is probably the hot spot of Peoria, I do have conversations with our young men and young ladies, and they want people to help them not get involved in gangs and in drugs. One of the ways that this program can help us, not only behaviorally but academically, is by providing opportunities for students to be involved in something that is positive after school. Because so often, my students leave school, and they go home, and there's no one there to watch them, supervise them, guide them, direct them. One of the things that we have found is when, like it's basketball season now, so our students, they know what the behavioral and academic expectations are for them to participate in that, so we do see an increase in academic success and attendance and behavior during the seasons. So I am hopeful that this Don't Start program piloting at Treewind and Harrison will extend that for our students, that there's not the lapse or the gap between the different seasons that we have as far as extracurricular activities. But one thing that we made sure was that these activities that will be offered to these students are activities that they're interested in. We have to have things that they want to work towards and want to work for, and that they want to participate in. And so it is my hope that with all of the support here, and the support of this great school board, that we will save the lives of not just my babies, my students at Treewind, but students across this district. And we just thank you very much for allowing us to pilot this program, and we look forward to a lot of success.
The Principal of Harrison is ill. Her Assistant Principal, Ryan Morrison?
Good evening. Just like to probably piggyback off of Mrs. Andrews, and just to say again, this is to offer our students, again, that do not have the positive role models at home, to give them those extra programs, that extracurricular activity, especially after the basketball season, as we see the same thing in the spike of positive behavior and academics increase, but to give them something after, so it'd be a great addition to already the programs we do have at Harrison.
Thanks, sir. Here we go. We're gonna strip the excuses. Poverty, geography, dysfunction, they're there, but we're gonna give them an option each and every day, and the more that participate, the more we're gonna offer. We're just doing a pilot. Dr. Lathan has given us a license to try it. We're gonna tweak it, and then we're gonna share it with the rest of the community. And to close, it's simply best said, plays in Peoria. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon, and your distinguished guests. We have the entire law enforcement apparatus of Peoria County and central Illinois in front of you, so be on your best behavior. Thank you very much. In November, the district began an internal investigation that led to the district's self-reporting of potential irregularities associated with the administration of the Illinois Standard Achievement Test, known as ISAT, to special education students at Charter Oak Primary School. The Illinois State Board of Education was contacted by the district on December 9th, when enough evidence was collected to cause concern within our district. As a board, we believe the internal investigation and self-reporting was not only a fair and necessary step to uphold the highest standards of educational quality and integrity for the benefit of our students, our schools, and our communities, but is also the expectation of the state that we self-report any findings that indicate state testing protocols were not followed. The investigation and formal self-report were completed and submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education on Friday, January 10th. At this time, members of our legal counsel who led the investigation will provide the Board a summary of their report. And Ms. Todd, would you please introduce yourself?
Everybody can hear me. My name is Michelle Todd, and I serve as legal counsel for the Board. I'm going to briefly summarize, as the Board President stated, the report that was submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education on Friday, January 10th. I will go through the investigatory process, the data that we looked into as part of the investigation, and then our findings as part of the investigation. Just quickly, an introduction. In November 2013, special education teachers in the district reported their concerns with testing irregularities on the Illinois Standards Achievement Test, otherwise known as the ISAT, for the special education population at Charter Oak Primary School. Specifically, these teachers reported that former Charter Oak Special Education students' 4th grade reading and math scores on the ISAT were significantly higher in both reading and math, when compared with the students' present levels of academic achievement on curriculum-based assessments, including the Measures of Academic Performance, or MAP Test is the acronym, a reading and math academic measurement administered to all district students across all grade levels. Additionally, current special education students in 6th and 7th grades received drastically lower scores on their 5th grade ISAT assessment when compared to their scores on both the 3rd and 4th grade ISAT administered at Charter Oak. Finally, staff members reported that former Charter Oak Special Education students would often ask teachers to read portions of the ISAT to them during administration, claiming that staff at Charter Oak would always read the assessments to the students during testing, and would only require the students to work for a specific period of time on the ISAT before providing additional support to the students in completing the assessment. Moreover, staff reported that students exhibited aggressive behavior during the administrative administration of the ISAT in 5th grade, as a result of having to endure the testing accommodations at their new school. The Superintendent appointed our firm as the Board's legal counsel to investigate these testing irregularities and provide the district with legal services in connection with the investigation. As part of this investigation and analysis, the district reviewed the following. First, ISAT data for special education students enrolled at both Charter Oak and Mark Bill's Middle School from 2008 to 2009 through the 2012-2013 school year. Second, MAP assessment data for the same population. And third, IEPs, or Individualized Educational Programs, from special education students enrolled at Charter Oak from 2008 through 2013. As part of this investigatory process, we also interviewed 14 staff members across the district and four former Charter Oak students. Briefly, just a discussion on the MAP assessment and the ISAT, and how they compare. According to the Northwest Evaluation Association, the association that creates and administers the MAP assessment, the MAP assessment is a significant predictor of success or failure on the ISAT, and shows a strong correlation between MAP assessments and ISAT test grades. So, in looking at the MAP test, it's one that many districts, if not most, use to gauge student needs and plan appropriate academic interventions. MAP assessments give teachers data that they can use to provide targeted interventions to improve ISAT scores for students. So, as I stated previously, one component of the investigation was a review of student data at its core. In looking at the data, one fact that we kept in mind while we were doing our investigation, that there was a strong correlation between the MAP test and the ISAT test, and the scores that would result. The correlation is so strong that MAP scores are often used to help teachers identify which students are likely to pass the ISAT, so they can help boost those students who are on the bubble by providing targeted interventions. The developers of the MAP test have reviewed nearly 85,000 student scores in Illinois, and found that the MAP scores accurately predict success on the ISAT at least 80% of the time. With that in mind, we would expect student percentile ranking on the MAP to roughly coincide with their percentile ranking on the ISAT. In other words, if they scored in the 10th percentile on the MAP test, we wouldn't expect an ISAT percentile in that same ballpark. We would not expect that students to have an ISAT score in the 85th percentile, for example. If those numbers do not correlate, there has to be an explanation. If most students' numbers do not correlate, it is indicative of some level of If most students' numbers do not correlate, it is indicative of some level of inappropriate assistance on the ISAT or the MAP. Test administrators may provide certain accommodations to students with disabilities during the administration of both the ISAT or the MAP, provided that the accommodation is set forth in the student's IEP or Section 504 Plan. Both ISAT and MAP prohibit some accommodations that negate the purpose of the test itself. For example, reading the reading portion of the ISAT to a student during administration. So, in first looking at the data, we first found that the numbers do not correlate when looking at test data on the MAP and ISAT among students who were in special education at Charter Oak and now are at Mark Bills. In 3rd and 4th grade at Charter Oak, their ISAT percentile rankings were quite high, many in the 70th percentile or higher. Their ISAT scores dropped when they moved on to Mark Bills in 5th grade. This drop-off was particularly alarming because at the same time, their MAP percentile rankings were holding relatively steady. For example, as can be seen in this chart, if we're looking at the reading portion of both the ISAT and the MAP, from 5th grade at Charter Oak, or from 4th grade, excuse me, at Charter Oak to 5th grade at Mark Bills, we're looking at the percentile drop for current 6th graders now at Mark Bills. When they moved from Charter Oak to Mark Bills in the red column there, that's the percentile drop in ISAT reading scores. The blue bar to the right represents the percentile drop on the MAP assessment in reading between 4th and 5th grade. The second bar talks then to 7th graders at Charter Oak, where these students experienced a 38.1% decline or drop on the reading portion of the ISAT test compared to a 2.9% gain on the MAP assessment as they moved to Mark Bills. Now, in comparing this data and similar students, a similar student population from Keller Primary to Lindberg, we see what we would most likely expect in these assessments, a strong correlation between ISAT data and MAP data, with a percentage point increase on the ISAT between Keller and Lindberg, and a 1.5% increase on the MAP assessment. We have similar assessment data as we look at Northmore Primary to Rolling Acres Middle School, where we see a 1.9% gain on the ISAT, on the reading assessment between the two schools, and a negative 1.6 decrease on the reading assessment for the MAP between the two schools. So this chart in itself gives you a good idea of the data that we were looking at and the lack of correlation between those scores for the special education population from Charter Oak to Mark Bills. Now, if we look at the same, now for the math section of the ISAT compared to the MAP, we're looking at the same sort of decreases. In current 6th graders at Charter Oak moving to Mark Bills, we're experiencing a 45.2% decrease on the math section of the ISAT in comparison to a 4% decrease on the math portion of the MAP. Now, when we get to current 7th graders at Mark Bills that came from Charter Oak, there is a difference here in the decline we see on the math assessment. It's only a 5.6% drop on the ISAT in movement for those students between 4th and 5th grade from Charter Oak to Mark Bills, where we see a 7% increase. When we look at Keller and Lindberg again as a comparable, it's a 9.2% increase on the ISAT compared to a 1.2% increase on the MAP. And then again, very similar to what we see at Keller to Lindberg, we have an 8.9% increase on the ISAT math portion of the test compared to almost no increase or decrease whatsoever, a 0.1% increase, or decrease, I'm sorry, in scores on the math section of the MAP between those two buildings. Now, we don't yet have ISAT scores for this year's 5th graders to make the same comparison, but when we look at current Mark Bills 5th graders' percentile rankings in 3rd and 4th grade against their percentile ranking on their 5th grade fall MAP scores, we see the same sort of decline as I described with the graphs just a second ago. So in looking at percentile points for each of these lines then represent the scores of one student across their 3rd grade ISAT reading, their 4th grade ISAT reading percentile score, and then 5th grade MAP reading percentile score, which almost across the board results in a significant decrease in achievement. When we look at math, we see a similar trend with students scoring a certain way in 3rd and then an increase in 4th with a dramatic decline again for each individual student percentile-wise on the 5th grade MAP math percentile. And again, because we don't have that 5th grade ISAT score to compare against the 3rd and 4th grades, we're using that MAP as, that MAP math score as a correlation as to where the performance should be for all of these students, where we would expect to see not such a large discrepancy as they move to the 5th grade. More so than looking at data, we also reviewed student IEPs to compare each student's level of academic functioning to their ISAT scores during the time period in question. Due to student confidentiality protections, we cannot discuss any individual student in detail with regards to testing and academic functioning. However, this information has been provided to the Illinois State Board of Education for its review. However, what we can say is this, ISAT scores for a majority of the affected students are remarkable in light of the students' disabilities and current levels of academic functioning. For example, students who are just learning to read in the 4th grade scored in the 67th to 92nd percentile on the reading portion of the ISAT. Yes, Board Member Patel?
So, to put that, so we're talking about 4th graders who are struggling to get through a book like Hop on Pop, like that is where their reading level is, and the ISAT score is reporting that they are fluently reading something like Harry Potter. Like, it's a really big...
Where I would say, with a student that's going through a pre, basically pre-reading strategies, basic decoding, sounding out words-
Right.
-as, you know, detailed in various different levels of academic functioning and curriculum-based assessments, that particular student is scoring in anywhere between the 67th and 92nd percentile for that grade level. So, well, not being familiar with those sorts of reading materials and where that falls on the curriculum line?
Ma'am? Would you please not interrupt the speaker? You'll have a chance later on. Thank you. No, we're not taking questions right now. This is a presentation. I'm sorry. Thank you. And we don't need any more of that either. I know exactly what I'm talking about.
So in sum, looking at the individual case studies and the data analysis suggests that special education students at Charter Oak benefited from some sort of inappropriate assistance on the ISAT tests from 2010 to 2013. Now, of course, the numbers only give us an indication that something here is amiss. If this phenomenon was only evident in a few students, it may be attributed to the child having a very poor test day in the 5th grade. But the data in this case shows that a vast majority of special education students at Charter Oak had a disconnect between their ISAT and MAP percentile rankings. A likely explanation is that there was some sort of systematic over-accommodation or other inappropriate assistance within those 3rd and 4th grade classrooms during the ISAT test that artificially inflated their percentile rankings. As a result, we explored those issues further by means of interviews with students, teachers, and the Charter Oak principal. In interviewing staff members at Charter Oak, several staff members admitted to violating ISAT testing protocol in administering the ISAT during 2010 through 2013. These admissions include the following: pointing to concept posters in the classroom for assistance during the ISAT assessment or immediately prior to the assessment; encouraging students to use the context of the question to figure out the answer during the assessment; reviewing student answer books after the tests are collected to clean up extraneous markings or blacken in answer bubbles if a student has marked multiple answers in response to a test question; directing students to erase an answer during test administration if it is clear to the staff member that the student intended to select another answer; or staff completely erasing the answer after the tests were collected; requiring students to read the assessment aloud to the staff member to ensure that the student was appropriately reading the assessment; finally, reviewing answer sheets after the tests are collected and redistributing the test booklets to students who missed questions, directing students to complete their answers. Staff also admitted that some of the ISAT scores for their students for the past three years appeared high in relation to their students' academic performance, so there was recognition of that fact. The building did not have a process in place to group special education students for ISAT assessments, as each child had individual accommodations for assessment in their IEPs. Staff members were not sure who was responsible for grouping students into a testing location for the ISAT based on the students' individual accommodations in their IEPs. Some staff reported that they had no idea what a student's IEP said before the ISAT test was administered. Staff reported no ISAT administration training was given by the Charter Oak principal on a yearly basis. In interviewing the principal at Charter Oak, the following came to light in terms of ISAT misconduct. The principal failed to administer the district's required training for standardized testing on the administration of the ISAT. Specifically, the principal first reported that he provided a 45-minute training on test administration each year during a staff meeting at the school. When confronted with staff reports that he did not provide this training on ISAT administration, the principal changed his story and stated that he provided staff members individual training on the administration of the ISAT. The principal failed to report or investigate score spikes for special education students on the ISAT beginning in 2010-2011, after acknowledging that individual students could not have received certain scores on the ISAT based on their academic functioning. The principal failed to compare student achievement data on the ISAT and MAP as required by his job description. The principal reported that he doesn't compare student achievement data on the ISAT with the MAP as part of his position. The principal failed to monitor Charter Oak staff to ensure proper accommodations on the test in accordance with ISAT testing protocols based on the lack of staff training. And finally, the principal failed to exercise control over Charter Oak's testing program, leading to a lack of oversight on ISAT testing. So, in taking the data, the individual case studies, and the admissions that we reviewed in talking to staff, our findings are as follows. Charter Oak staff violated ISAT testing protocol in providing inappropriate assistance to special education students during the administration of the ISAT. The principal failed to provide district-required training to his staff on ISAT testing administration. The principal reported to these investigators that he recognized a significant spike in the performance of his special education students in 2010-2011 and failed to either report the scores to central administration or individually investigate the increase in the scores. And finally, Charter Oak staff likely provided special education students accommodations and modifications on the ISAT regardless of the students' individual educational needs and accommodations in their IEPs. In conclusion, as stated earlier, this report and our findings have been released to the Illinois State Board of Education as of last Friday, January 10th, and we, at the board's direction, will continue to work with the Illinois State Board of Education to provide any supplemental data and information the state board may request for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd. Do any members of the board have any questions of her at this moment? Ms. Wolfmeyer?
I just wanted to clarify, we're not talking about three or four special education students at Charter Oak. We're talking about, you looked at the majority, if not all, of the special education students and found these...
Looked at, the total was 26 students across a three-year period that had IEPs.
And I would just like to clarify, no one is saying the students did anything wrong. The students did nothing wrong here. This was adults acting to...
No, that was not one of our findings from our report, based on the age and the academic functioning of the students.
Any other questions? Mr. Eisenhammer?
Did you investigate the regular students too? Was there any issue with respect to the students who were not special ed?
Yes, we did look at the regular division population and did not note any significant discrepancies as with the special education population.
Ms. Ross, did you have a question? I'm sorry, I couldn't see you there, so... Okay. Anyone else? Herbert?
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Todd and her team that did this investigative work, as many had called us as board members and asked that we would look into this situation, get the information, and so I just thank you all for also working at Board Direction to bring this information to us this evening.
Thank you. I would also mention that the report that was submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education will be made available tonight for the public on the district website by clicking on the Board of Education and then Meeting Schedule. It will be placed next to this meeting's agenda. Portions of the report have been redacted to protect student and staff identities and information. Are there any other announcements from board members or the administration? There being none, next item is approval of the minutes. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 16, 2013 board meeting? Any questions or discussion? Madam Secretary, would you call and roll, please?
Aye.
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 We have now come to the place in our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefit of our minutes. The time limit for any one speaker is five minutes, and the time limit for any one topic is 20 minutes. No person less than 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by his or her parent, guardian, or teacher, except with unanimous consent of the board. We have, I believe, 15 names that requested to speak, so first is Tiffany Britt.
Did Mr. Wettererar do something wrong? Is Mr. Wettererar going to jail? These are just a few of the questions that have been asked by the innocent students at Charter Oak Primary School. Children that can barely spell the words inconsistency and irregularity are seeing the irregularities and the injustices in the way that you guys have handled the situation with their principal. As they struggle to understand what's going on, we, as parents and teachers and members of the community, have been searching for answers as well. Even though we've begged you for a response, it feels as if our questions have fallen on deaf ears and sometimes what feels like cold, uncaring hearts. So that is why I stand before you today. See, Superintendent Lathan, it feels as if you have this hierarchy, this structure confused. We elect the board, the board essentially governs you, which by default makes you accountable to us, so how dare you ignore us? How dare you refuse to answer our questions? So in the absence of answers from you, I've come up with my own conclusions today, and I'd like to share a few of them with you. Conclusion number one, you as a superintendent are equally as responsible and should face the same, if any, or worse consequences than Mr. Wettererar. If testing irregularities have existed for the past five years and you've been a superintendent for more than three of those five years, that makes you responsible. for more than three of those five years, that makes you responsible. Not only are you responsible for providing the necessary resources and adequate time for him to supervise and provide oversight to those teachers, you're also responsible for providing an ethical environment, one in which ensures that all employees of District 150 make good, sound choices. So this was not the failure of one school, this was not the failure of one principal or a few teachers, this was the failure of an administration at which you are the center of. Conclusion number two, Mr. Wettererar and Charter Oak are being unfairly singled out. As I understand the issue, there are inconsistencies between test scores and grades at Charter Oak and test scores and grades at Mark Bills. Based on what I've seen, however, and what I've just heard from your lawyer, the scope of the investigation was way too limited and way too focused on Mr. Wettererar and Charter Oak's in order to come to a fair, unbiased conclusion. A fair investigation would have extended its reach, and I say this for a few reasons. First of all, all schools that would have been impacted by the allegations would have undergone the same level of scrutiny and received the same consequences that Charter Oak's did. Charter Oak feeds into Washington, Mark Bills, and eventually Richwoods. All of the principals at those schools are still intact. The second reason that I say that the scope of your investigation is way too limited and is unfair is because all of the schools in District 150 were not investigated. Again, the core issue here is not one school, one principal, and a few teachers. The core issue is a district-wide problem, and it shines a light on your lack of leadership. Now, I listened to you and saw those charts that are up there, and I wrote down a few notes. First of all, we're talking about four out of 500 or 20 out of 500 students that go to Charter Oak, just a small percentage of students. And secondly, they're making a transition from a grade school to a middle school. That would certainly create some inconsistencies. They're making a transition from... They're making a transition from a distinguished school with a great academic environment to one that's comparatively inferior, in my opinion. So that's going to cause some inconsistencies. And my third conclusion here, in addition to the investigation being unfair, it was also grossly biased. I've been informed that the investigation that you're using to determine Mr. Wettererar's fate was conducted, first of all, by lawyers that were affiliated with the district, also by employees that report directly or report to you in some manner. I also understand that the parties charged with conducting the investigators were not true investigators, but rather lawyers playing that role. In either case, these are significant conflicts of interest, which would impact the integrity of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Deffenbaugh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Superintendent Lathan. I come to you today as a concerned grandparent and citizen of Peoria and what is happening at Charter Oak Primary School as well as in the entire District 150. I was born and raised in this city. I attended grade school at Columbia, and I graduated from Peoria High School. I have lived in three other states, but I have always returned to Peoria because this is my home. I am very alarmed by the recent transpirings within this district and the lack of concern and professionalism demonstrated by the manner in which Principal John Wettererar was put on administrative leave from our school. The self-reporting that the district embarked upon to the Illinois State Board of Education is certainly a bit strange, given the fact that the Illinois State Board of Education itself stated these matters are always handled on a district level, and is uncertain how to handle this report of the district's investigation. I believe in our school. I believe in the Charter Oak community and the integrity of our teachers and our administrator, John Wettererar. What I cannot believe is that all of the sudden, out of the blue, this investigation was launched based on ISAT scores from five years ago. I find this alarming, that your blue-ribbon school would be singled out as well, and not all schools within this district looked at. Please correct me if I'm wrong, if that is not the case, and that every District 150 school has been looked at and the ISAT and MAP scores compared. This board meeting tonight is highly important for many reasons. You are all very well aware how unhappy and upset the Charter Oak community is over this matter. I want to remind you again, as I have in numerous letters to each individual on this board, as well as Dr. Lathan and our city council. This affects not only our children's lives, but our city. The changes that this board enacts tonight and the administrators that they hire as well as the ones they fire or terminate or relocate to other jobs within the district has a devastating impact upon our children's lives and their education. This is a public school system, and it's governed by laws that are to protect our students, our parents, and our employees. You were placed into office by us, ladies and gentlemen, the people, and we have certain rights as well, as your constituents. You have forgotten that. We have the right to hear the charges, we also have the right to see the evidence regarding these matters. You can no longer hide behind the shield that you've used for almost two months that this is a personnel matter. The time is now to come clean with the accounting that we've been asking for since day one. What we just heard was an accounting, but it is not an unbiased one. These are our children, ladies and gentlemen, and this is our school. Our demands have not been frivolous nor outrageous, and we demand an impartial investigation into the allegations of the ISAT irregularities at Charter Oak as well as all other District 150 schools. This does not mean investigation by your district employees under Dr. Lathan. This means an outside impartial body. This would ensure that all parties are represented fairly and accurately, and that no doubt would be in place of the integrity of the investigation. I personally take offense to the notion that these special education students who may have issues in the classrooms are on other types of tests clearly different than ISAT cannot do well on one and do poorly on the other. My grandson is autistic. He is in first grade at Charter Oak. When he came into Charter Oak last year in kindergarten, he was having much difficulty in speaking. He was not considered nonverbal, but his verbal ability to talk to you was very limited. However, if you were to give him a test that was written, he could do very well on it, and he is doing very well. So this tells me right then and there that you cannot compare one child to another and how their achievement is based on a test. I take offense that the children's knowledge and their achievements solely on government demanded testing is wrong. I believe that is why ISAT is going away, is it not? We as parents and grandparents intend to fight for our school. This district is hurting, and anyone sitting here who does not believe this has their heads in the sand. Hundreds upon hundreds of people have left our city, moved to outline communities...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name's Brenda Wilson, and I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a kindergartner at Charter Oak. And first, I would just like to say that when I had children, we were a homeowner way before that, and we did not move there because of the school, but we were told by our real estate agent how valuable that area was because of Charter Oak. When the babies came along, I was adamant that I did not want to send my kids to public school because of the horrible reputation in this city and the public schools. My husband then showed us our tax bill from the city, and I saw that over 50% of our taxes come directly into District 150 to support you, and at that time I decided to open my mind. Within the first and second week, I was blown away by the wonderful environment, the morale of that building. It's highly noticeable, from the smiles on faces to the shiny floors. It's an extraordinary group of people with an extraordinary leader. You must agree that, Dr. Lathan. You sending Courtney to Charter Oak speaks volumes, and the fact that few of your high-level administrators having children currently attending also speaks volumes. I feel like it would be very fair to say that if you had people like Principal Wettererar in every building in this district, our district would be thriving. We would put... If that were the case, private schools would be out of business in Peoria. Sadly, we are not thriving. Sadly, I've had to defend sending my kids to District 150 schools for the last five years, and I'm okay to do that because I was really proud of Charter Oak and how we are out there. It's a different world. And now this. Testing irregularities? Testing irregularities? Nothing more than a statistical anomaly that can't even be understood or proven by most of us. Nor do the tests don't show how smart our kids are. How would a child remember taking a test from six years ago? The things I just saw on that, all these special places the kids are supposed to go, right now those kids are packed into that building like sardines. We have mobile classrooms sitting outside, and they've handled it gracefully. Those teachers are smiling and handling it with grace because that's how they've been trained by Principal Wettererar. Seeing the things that you just had on that screen just make me... I have fire inside because you're questioning the integrity of very well-experienced teachers. They know how to conduct testing and have not intentionally violated any testing protocols. I have been reading cases such as this in different places, talked to friends that are principals in different cities and states, and I hear that this is a very common problem, maybe not exactly like ours, but the test scores are addressed, training happens, maybe they put monitors in the rooms, they throw out the test, maybe retest the children. These people behind me want a good education for our children, or we wouldn't be standing here. We don't... If there is something wrong, come help us fix it, but don't treat us like criminals. These teachers are amazing. In none of the cases did I see a principal put on leave. This is because the principals don't administer the tests. In fact, if you guys need testing monitors, I could probably get volunteers for every single classroom, and you guys could come in and march during ISATs. We could video record each room so that you could see exactly what's going on. That's how proud we are of our teachers and of our principal. The way that this was handled was very poor at best in the minds of most of us. He's called out of the building, and people go in and shuffle around his office for hours with the door shut. No one gave any explanation. The school secretary's left to communicate a very vague message to the staff. The email was even subpar. It wasn't until after we involved the media that we even got something through our email that was remotely respectful. You have treated our leader like a criminal. You have investigated all the schools. If that's true, why weren't any of these other principals put on paid administrative leave like Principal Wettererar? The keys, the keys at the school. You guys really changed the locks to the building. When looking into the key situation, did anyone think to maybe ask the teachers communication? Just ask the teachers if anybody maybe has an extra key before you had the keys relocked after hours on a Friday night? Now our teachers can't come in and give their time on the weekends, that many of them did, so that they could be organized and ready to rock and roll on Monday morning for those kids. That makes me feel like the teachers are being treated like criminals, and they have handled this with grace. How are we supposed to trust you when this investigation's been done by your lawyers and your administration? We voted all of you into your seats. Our taxes support Dr. Lathan's paycheck and this whole district. You should be sitting here for us, yet we feel incredibly alienated by you, and it should not be like this. Darn. I'll be back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, president of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. I concur with the previous speakers. I would like to thank the community for being here tonight. The schools ultimately do belong to you, and we, the members of the PFT, are proud to serve you. Thanks for standing up for what you believe in. Secondly, I would like to thank Hedy Elliott Gardner and the Moonlight Coalition for Adult Learning, a program that goes right along with Don't Shoot. Twenty-five students have recently earned their GED because of this program. No money is necessary, no paperwork, no appointment, no red tape. All students need is a desire to learn, a desire to get that GED. Check her out on Facebook, again, Moonlight Coalition for Adult Learning. If you know someone who needs a GED, send them her way. Thirdly, I would like to thank our school resource officers for the tremendous job they do keeping our children safe. The fact that our officers have been compelled to file upwards of 10 grievances over the past three years is evidence that they have been under fire. Whereas the state training board is responsible for temporarily disarming our officers, that board's ruling should not be used as a scapegoat for how our officers have been treated. Certainly, we stand with them, we respect, appreciate, and support them, and we ask that you do the same. Spend a day in their shoes, ask them what equipment they deem necessary to keep our students safe, then go to bat to do your best to get it for them. Again, to our men and women in uniform, we respect and appreciate you, we stand with you. Over the past six months, the PFT has made multiple attempts to collaborate with the district as a teachers' union and as part of the Unity Council. In fact, the president of our Unity Council stood up at a board meeting and extended our collective hand, saying, "We, the leaders of the unions, are here and we're ready to work with you." To no avail. Collaboration is what works, having all the major stakeholders at the table, including parents and the community, deciding upon getting behind and working towards challenging educational goals in a transparent and productive manner. The albatross around our district's neck is its reluctance to come to this realization. We're in a global economy, an era of educational innovation, but stuck amid 150's antiquated bureaucracy. Almost every action the board takes becomes scandalous, even if it's not, and that's because you don't have your stakeholders at the table. When you act unilaterally, the only option you give your stakeholders is to react to a decision made by a part and not the whole. Maybe you don't want the union at the table because of your fear we're trying to take over the district. Let me assure you, we don't have time to concern ourselves with power struggles. We're poised to help lead by collaboration, transparent collaboration, that will expose and that will eradicate the nonsense that will help us get our ship righted and will set us on a positive course for the future. Our students, parents, and community deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Jan Olson.
Well, after taking a quick look at this audience, I figure I got you by a good 20 years or so. Hello, folks. I'm coming from a whole different angle. I am a neighbor of John Wettererar's. I live almost four or five houses down, so when this came down, I felt I had to come and say something. And the first thing that comes to me, and I can't speak, to the kids, I mean, I've been there and done that, but my point is, what all happened to the innocent until proven guilty kind of thing? What the hell do... Even a killer, even a child molester, everybody gets their day in court, but Wettererar is on his way out the door. He can't even come here. It's illegal. He can't speak for himself. He has somebody else's lawyer speaking against him. I wanted to ask this board, has any one of you asked John, "Hey, John, you know, this is looking a little serious. Can we talk about it?" Did anybody in this board, have you talked to John Wettererar? I'd just like to know.
Right. Have you?
Has anybody talked to him?
Except hands? Don't see any hands, do we?
Why not? Why not? Did somebody tell you not to? Because you are our conduit. You're the only thing we got. You are our conduit. And us, we've got nobody else, and if you sit there on your fanny with your teeth in your mouth and do nothing, we can't either. Is that fair or is it not? Is it right or is it not? That's all you have to think about. Innocent until proven guilty. That's what I want to have for John Wettner.
Dr. Lathan, members of the board. Bob Carruthers, I worked with District 150 and for District 150 for over thirty years in various positions, and... Just makes me older. I was a teacher, coach, principal, and Director of Human Resources the last ten years I worked in the district before going to Park Ridge as an Assistant Superintendent. I fully realize the necessity of the confidentiality that you've had on behalf of the security deal that's going on and the other issues related to John Wetterhour. I understand that from the human resource perspective, but until tonight, I don't think any of us, other than through the Journal Star or the other media, knew any of the facts or any of the things that were being investigated. That being said, I'd like to emphasize, first of all, the importance of safety in our schools. Being a former principal and working in HR, and I was in every building as much as I possibly could be. Way back, maybe thirty years ago, we had a higher-a-badge type atmosphere in District 150 in many of our schools. I remember the outfit, the company. I don't want to mention it because most of those people slipped at the doors of our building, and we weren't protected. In today's society, safety of our children, of our staff, of our administration, to me, is a very important ingredient in success, particularly in our district. There were incidents, and many of you know of one that happened maybe four years ago in a high school, and I'm not going to get into that now, but I feel if students, staff, and parents feel safe about a school environment, better learning takes place. I know that we went from liaison officers in all of our schools, city policemen, after the higher-a-badge type deal, and then we went to the present system that you have now in place, and I always felt that was pretty good. When I retired, I was hired back at Sterling School as an interim principal, came back from Park Ridge, bought a house in the city of Peoria, because that's still where my heart is. But I met a... At that point in time, they were beginning to carry sidearms in the buildings, and not once do the guards that I know have unholstered their guns in a building. They've just had them available. But I think that, going back to the education, the atmosphere in a building, safety is a top priority. Taking away the availability of gears, the gear, the tools that security people are using makes them relatively ineffective. It would be similar to taking away technology from your teaching staff, in my opinion. I really urge you tonight to work with the state and local police, and both of them were here tonight, two of them, the chiefs, to try to restore the security to what it used to be and improve upon that. On returning from Park Ridge, one of the other jobs I had, twice, was interim Director of Human Resources. Two people were released, and unfortunately, I was about 6'5", and I had hair back in those days, but that's what human resources does to an individual, I guess. I met John Wetterhour as principal of Greeley School at that time. He began his principalship at Greeley before going to Charter Oak. I was amazed at the enthusiasm, the caring kindness that this man had, and he had the toughest students at that time in Peoria. I was most impressed with John as an administrator back in those days. When I was at Lincoln School... One... Thirty seconds? When I was at Lincoln School...
I'm sorry, sir. We have to ask everyone to take five minutes. Thank you.
All right. Please give serious consideration to John. Thank you.
My name's Rick Kirkbridge, Oak Park Drive, over by the stadium. Board's decision as presented last meeting to stop the use of Peoria Stadium for high school football for the 2014 season is very disturbing and clearly demonstrates a total disregard for the community's desire. The community is the city council, the park board, who listen to the public, and the vast majority of the very vocal citizens. Peoria Park Board presented at the December meeting the proposed Peoria Public High School 2014 football schedule, which indicated that the decision had been made by the Peoria Park School District. The schedule presented apparently has been... Was accredited by Vice President Wolfmeyer, included the plan to upgrade the Richwoods Football Stadium, add football game fields at Manuel and Central, high schools at a cost of more than two and one-half times the cost to upgrade Peoria Stadium, as presented by the board financial officer. There should not be night games in the Manuel and Central locations, so lights would not be required. The board's own numbers provided last summer was that one of the two schools only averaged an attendance of 464 at Peoria Stadium. One issue really must be addressed is safety. Why would the school board put family safety at risk by scheduling evening football games in these two areas? The Peoria Police Tracking System reported that there were multiple shootings incidents in the month of November in the South Side and the West Bluff. What is the rush to force this stupid plan to eliminate the use of Peoria Stadium and waste more public funds, like the property purchases by Glen Oak? The property purchased by Central High School is another example of the overall mismanagement of the total budget. Purchases of this type must be changed to be controlled and only approved by public vote and referendum. The cost of the upgrade of the new athletic fields were sloppily compiled and poorly presented by the financial officer in an unprepared, rambling verbal explanation. The presentation included ridiculous expenditures and underestimated costs, which to the public are totally unacceptable. The board has continuously failed to exhibit any financial responsibility and continue to spend more money than the district is allocated by all the available revenue sources. The board continues to ignore the clear citizens' mandate concerning the future of Peoria Stadium and Peoria Public School Football. The Peoria Public School Board must demonstrate fiscal responsibility and establish budgets that are within the amount of the total revenue resource from all state and federal grants, gifts, any other sources, and normal taxes. The board lack of logic, the lack of logic and the mentality being used was defined as stated publicly by the board president, that it is not possible to manage the district like a business. An understatement in the manner the board has operated. The board must learn to... Learn cost control, cost management, and problem-solving techniques used by businesses like the Six Sisma programs, Root Cause, Five Y Analysis, or some other viable systematic technique, obviously not in use. The top priorities of the board should be providing safe, quality education, equally administered for all students and faculty that is cost-effective, held within the total amount of the district's available revenue sources. That was five minutes?
That was, sir. Sharon Cruz.
Sitting too long? Tonight, many have gathered again to protest the treatment of Dr. Lathan's latest victim. We are finally becoming a connected community that no man is an island kind. So many among us have become the targets of what seems to be a series of personal vendettas. Let our protests tonight be for John and all the others punished for reasons we do not understand. I want to add the school resource officers whose lives have been disrupted for reasons that seem more subjective than objective. My own focus has lately turned to the disrespect shown to the taxpayers of this community. This board's first mistake was allowing so many people with no ties or loyalty to District 150 to come to squander our money in very dubious ways. The money spent by only thirty-four of the fifty-four procurement cardholders totals over one million dollars on purchases without any evidence of direct board approval. I fear that many have unwittingly been caught in a questionable spending spree. Encouraged by a plan sold by Dr. Lathan to this board on August 23rd, 2010, possibly the first act in her efforts to control the money as well as the people of this district. Please consider that those who have spent the most are those who have no real reason to care about the future of this district. The $132,000 spent on 780 food transactions, ranging from $3.89 to $4,900, was charged to the P-cards of thirty-four employees. And I have little doubt that much of that spending was orchestrated by someone other than the purchases, the persons who made the charges. Remember, these cards are the superintendent's replacement for a purchasing department. It is my understanding that every purchase made by the district should correspond to a line item on the budget. Where does each of these 780 transactions fit into the budget? What is the justification for spending education money on feeding often the highest-paid employees of the district? How many hours... How many hours of work time were spent shopping for this food and eating it? About $81,000 was spent for furnishings and products for cosmetology, a worthy enough cause, but also Dr. Lathan's pet project. The remaining $928,000 was spent for travel expenses, a variety of educational programs and supplies, and retail shopping at Best Buy, Office Depot, Walmart, Office Max, Menards, Sam's, Hobby Lobby, Burgner's, Kohl's, Floris', Target, Walgreens. Many questions beg for answers. I am not cynical enough to believe that employees have made personal purchases. However, a system with so little oversight could demand a level of proof never required by a legitimate purchasing department. Is a principal's P-card an opportunity for favorites to be rewarded? Who receives the stuff the Wisconsin Avenue administrators purchase? Who is being rewarded for what? I am curious to know why the three high school principals spent almost no money on food or on retail shopping, but some principals spent much money on both. How many of these cardholders receive requests from the superintendent to use their cards for particular items? It seems that many of these purchases were meant to be under the radar, not reported in the manner specified by board policy. Why did cardholders spend so much money on taxes when the district has a tax-exempt status? A total of almost $28,000 was spent on taxes, with $12,000 in taxes paid to local merchants. The policy clearly indicates the superintendent is the overseer of P-card spending, and as such, should have sent out clear messages about taxes until a couple weeks ago. Also, policy states that anyone who spends over $500 on a single person should need special permission from the superintendent. So far, I have checked only eight people's cards, and there are sixty over $500.
Thank you very much.
The buck stops with you around that table.
Terry Knapp.
Terry Knapp, 922 West Woolshire Drive, Peoria. In danger of being admonished by the chair, I'm going to turn and show you people my shirt. And it says on the front of the shirt, it was sent to me by a person over the holiday here when I was on vacation in eighty-one degree Fort Lauderdale when you had eighteen below zero. Shows you who's smart. I don't know. But it says on the front, "Those who can teach, those who can't pass laws about teaching." I would add one more thing. We all know what lawyers do. Lawyers present cases for the people who pay them. Obviously, there's no cross-examination going on here. These people... How many times tonight did you hear these people say one word in a positive nature about Mr. Wetterhour or the teachers that did the testing? None! Absolutely zero. It's outrageous.
Excuse me, sir. Would you please address the board and not the audience?
One lady stood up here and addressed the board the whole time.
Well, maybe you're just having to address this way.
I will do it, okay? Only because I'm not here to waste my time.
Thank you.
Okay. The other thing you need to know that they didn't address, the lawyers didn't say one word about the central administration. Not one investigatory thing about how any central administrator had any part to do with this. In Atlanta, they fired the superintendent and put her in jail when the test scores didn't show up right. That's what they did, and we all know that. Now, another thing, the rumor is that the reason why Mr. Wetterhour is going is because Dr. Lathan's friend from North Carolina, who is losing her job at Central due to the fact that they're doing away with the grant over there at the end of the year, needs a $100,000 job. Well, count on her getting the job, okay? She'll be in that position next year. That's my prediction. Mr. B. Coats, and you have in front of you, board members, I presented to you about six weeks ago that Mr. B. Coats from Durham, North Carolina, was under investigation for credit card problems and malfeasance. We asked you to investigate then, Ms. Cruz has done this, eventually somebody else is going to investigate it. Not you guys. No, we wouldn't let you guys. We wouldn't let our own auditors because they don't want to investigate it. The thing you need to understand about Mr. B. Coats, this article says that he was let go. He was fired, but he resigned. And the rumor is, Dr. Lathan, that you've applied for the job.
Yeah.
You know? And I don't know if that's true or not, and you can direct the comments, but this... the comments, but this dysfunctional district that you said the first day you got here was all of a sudden dysfunctional when you came, this dysfunctional district can become functional again if you leave.
Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me? Yes, the, the board and everyone, this is very troubling for me. It's very rare, and I'm a very straight, number one, Charles Williams, six of nine eleven, Kimberly Drive. It's very rare, I give a person honors. And I'm, I'm tonight, I'm no man person, but I was kind of a little disturbed by seeing the sheriff and the mayor and all of them here, the lady was talking, I, I agree with that. I thought they should have stayed here. That's just me. But, but, but I, I, I'm not going to get into a political hey, because this is how this thing gets started in Peoria. Dr. Lathan, Superintendent Lathan is a very professional person. You may not think so best, I'm not going to get into it, very professional. My kid went to Keller and Lindbergh, and Superintendent Lathan was nowhere in rhyme. And I've been in this district, my kid is in Richwood, and all I can do is do what's right as a military man. If I see it's right, I'm going to call it the way it is. The board has been outstanding, y'all have been good, you've been fair. I don't know this principal, everybody says he's a good person. But I do know this here, if he did something wrong, I'm listening to what the attorney say, he had an opportunity to prove himself. And we have that kind of thing. But now, when you get to start talking about tampering with evidence, you better be careful with that, that's FBI stuff. You end up going to jail on both sides of the aisle. But it doesn't look good for the community. We as a whole, we must get beyond this here. If the principal done something wrong, we got to move on. But we going to hold schools, principal, superintendent, teachers, parents, and everybody accountable for what they do in Peoria. But I, I, I think we, we start cherry picking, saying he's a good guy, what if he did do something wrong? So I'm going along with the board tonight that I'm going, I'm supporting them, and I'm hoping that, that they're, not hoping that he did something wrong, but if they, they got the evidence, I'm going to stick with the board. I mean, with the Peoria, I'm sticking with them. And I'm not going to get out here, and I think we ought to put a gag on the issue, you know, that, do you know the facts? I don't know all the facts, and I'm not going to criticize the principal. But I do know this here, Superintendent Lathan is very outstanding, her performance is A to me, and I'm giving her that, not because of what she done, she came in this school district, and she have a marvelous records that I say superb, because I have dealt with superintendents, and I haven't seen one like this one here. I goes all over, Iowa City, Des Moines, Iowa, Minnesota, we talk about her, Georgia, North Carolina, Seattle, Washington, talk about her, we know her, and she doing a good job, the board doing a good job. And I want to say, continue to do what y'all are doing, follow the rules, because you can't follow John or Star. Y'all do the policymaking, keep doing the policymaking. I did it when I was in the military, I put people's eye. So I made policies, the board got policies, they got procedure to follow. And as a parent, I got to follow them. You going to follow them if you keep living. So, you know, I, I take my hat off to the superintendent tonight, thank you for a good job you're doing.
Thank you, sir. You might want to hold that if it's easier to get to it. There you go.
That's good, I guess.
Thank you for that.
I, I'd just like to say, a person can turn around and, as he's talking, and whether he's, you should be able to hear him, and, and maybe you don't understand the language of English, because you, you people, some of you people are kind of touchy. But I'll, I'll go on, I'll go on what I want to tell you tonight. I support these good people here and their principal, Mr. Wetterhauer. And I support the school police, and, or you call them resource officers, but they got training like a policeman, you know? And you took away a lot of their powers to the extent they couldn't carry their firearm after their stint at the schools. And I don't know what was your idea about that, but to me, it's kind of poor judgment. And I'd, I'd really like to know how much we're paying those lieutenants to hang around the school. You know, we need flatputs, you know, people that go around all the time in the, in our schools. So I, I'd like to know how much we're paying them, you know? But I support our police force there at the, at our high schools. And I'd like to tell you what I oppose. I oppose that elite, you know, you took away a lot of the powers of the teachers, you know, that they could reprimand the students, and then some of the principals, that sometimes they don't, they don't back their teachers up. So if you, you people should work on that, you know? You should listen to your elders, you know? I'm probably older than any of you young people sitting up there. And, you know, you gain wisdom as you get older, but you people don't, either don't understand English, or you can't hear well, or you just don't give a damn. But anyway, I oppose you people spending all that money to buy these properties. You should use that money to repair and modernize our Peoria stadium. You know, in the old days, too, the American Legion sponsored the Fourth of July, High of Fireworks, and that's where they held it, at the Peoria stadium. You people, I don't know if you ever heard of all this stuff, but you don't, you don't, I don't think you know a lot of tradition, especially some of you people that aren't, well, aren't a native Peoria, you weren't born here, you know? And so I'm telling you that you haven't done, you're part of repurposing the stadium. All you're doing is buying, the people are going to go there, you know? They, I hear one fellow, I mean, he mentioned Central and Richwood's. I think he said something about the, all the shootings there, and South Side and the, East Platte. I was born and raised in the South Side, and I still live there, and when I die, we're going to block off the street and have the visitation right there in front of my eyes. You people better shape up, like the lady said, get up in your fandango and, and show some positive action, because right now, ain't worth a darn. You know, I hate to say it, but that's my last word. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear me? First of all, I wanted to say that after I left the board meeting and read the paper the next day, I wasn't surprised at all, but I was really disappointed to see that you put this principal on indefinite leave. What a slap in the face to him and to the public, the public who came here to talk to you in defense of him. Now, I want to say some things about these test scores, this young attorney, I'd like to know if she has a special education child, I'd like to know what she knows about special education, I'd like to know about what the investigators know about special education, because I know a lot about it, having a deaf and blind son who's been to Helen Keller Center, a lot, and he was in a coma for two years. And I'd like to know, I think it's very interesting, she gives her little report, and now, one, there's one or two weak questions from this board? When we're talking about the reputation of a principal that you're trying to drag through the mud? If I was sitting on that board, I could have come up with about a hundred and questions in sixty minutes easily, and yet you have none. Do you know how that looks to the public? It looks to me as a voter, you're not doing your job at all. And now, when Sharon Cruz comes up here and she talks about all these expenditures, what are you doing about that? Is anybody calling her? Is anybody looking into that? Or do we just set, let Superintendent Lathan do whatever she pleases? Evidently, we do. What are you people sitting there for? All you do is sit there and stare at us. You're sitting there staring at me. Stop staring at me, get on your feet, get doing your job. I know that you're not being paid for it, but if you don't want to do your job, then you shouldn't have run for the Board of Education. It's as simple as that. Any parent here, or myself, could do a better job than any of you who are up there tonight, including you, Ms. Attorney. And I just want everybody to know that I am, I am so happy to see all of you here. I will be back in two weeks also. It's really good to see the public's involved and keeping an eye on all of you. Maybe it will encourage you to get out of your chairs and actually do something while our district is falling apart right in front of you. Now, as far, as far as special ed testing goes, shows how little you know about it with her charts up there. These are two different schools, different grades, different kids, different disabilities, different teachers, and I could go on and on and on about variables. Have you ever heard of variables? When you get home, look it up in the dictionary, okay? Special education, children have lots of variables, and they may differ on various days. And as far as the teachers who are involved in this mess, why weren't they fired? Why aren't they on administrative leave? What, what's going on there? It's, it's okay to say, oh, you did things wrong and you still have your job? I don't understand that. Does anybody want to explain, explain any of this to me, or you just want to stare it? I guess you just want to stare it. Let me tell you something, if I was up there, I would do everything to defend myself. I would not take this from the public, I would have responses for people, I would answer their questions. And for you not to do so, y'all just look stupid.
You may do, need to adjust that microphone a bit there.
I'm not that tall. So I trust this board to assess the professional qualifications of a superintendent of schools, and I have no children in District 150. So why do I believe I have anything to say to this board? Well, I have years of experience and success rebuilding organizations both locally and on a national basis. Virtually every organization was in crisis when I began the rebuilding process. In addition, my community involvement has given me the opportunity to visit many schools in not only District 150, but numerous districts across the region over the years. Let me also say that I believe that this board wants to do the right thing, and wants to deliver the best education possible to the students in the district. I'm a neighbor of both the board president and John Wetterhauer. I know both gentlemen to be men of honor who want to do the right thing. I've become increasingly aware while visiting District 150 schools of the atmosphere of fear in District 150. I have observed that schools in the surrounding area foster climates that are progressive, open, and supportive. By contrast, my interactions within District 150 have confirmed for me that staff is consistently afraid to say or do anything which might be viewed as potentially critical of the current superintendent. I believe this so strongly that I have edited my statement to make sure I don't mention any school that I've been in or anyone I've interacted with. On a recent visit to a District 150 school, a colleague of mine said to me, after experiencing the atmosphere there before we met with any kids, this is why I pay for my kids to go to private school. The kids were delightful as always, the administration was not. As a board, you now have a climate of fear in your schools. I know from experience that organizations of any kind do not prosper when everyone is operating from fear. It closes down innovation, employees disengage, and everyone just goes through the paces. I ask you as a board, do you want this kind of organization? Are you comfortable with employees afraid to speak up for what they believe is right? I have come to believe, and I don't make this decision lightly, it is time for this superintendent and her reign of terror to end. I believe John Wetterhauer and talented administrators and teachers like him in the district can be a part of building a strong organization once the climate and atmosphere in our schools is allowed to change. Again, I ask you as a board, is this really how you want our schools run?
Thank you.
My name's Dan Dugall, at fifty-one oh-three West Greenridge Court in Peoria, Charter Oak School. I've just got a few things to say tonight, and I'll try to be short, but it's my understanding that you're going to be making a decision later on tonight about Mr. Wetterhauer and his future here within the district. Don't think for one second that this decision doesn't affect more than just one man. If I can get folks who came here to support John Wetterhauer tonight to stand silently for just a moment. Your decision affects hundreds of students, thousands of taxpayers, the entire community. I am proud to be part of this community right here, the Charter Oak community, and I desperately want to be proud of our district as well. When you think of the kind of school district that you want in the future, do you want engaged parents, working collectively with parent, with teachers and principals and administration? Don't you want the kind of environment that we have out at Charter Oak? Don't you want a gym full of engaged parents giving a standing ovation to the Teacher of the Year award? It's interesting that just one year ago, it was John getting that award. Please don't begin to dismantle one of the finest schools in the district. I said it, I'd said it last month at the district meeting, and I'll say it again this month, you cannot destroy your way to success. You were all elected, and part of any elected official's mandate is to do the will of the people. The will of the people at Charter Oak and this community couldn't be more clear. The will of the people at Charter Oak and this community couldn't be more clear. The only acceptable decision is to put Mr. Wetterhauer back in the principal's office at Charter Oak. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Latham, members of the board. Sorry to say, I don't have a presentation as prepared as some of those before me. And a lot of my questions have been answered, both with the legal report and with their How many students were involved in this? Twenty-six? That's only two or three classrooms. How significant are these scores? Do they really mean anything? Now, to understand, one of the allegations is that the teachers were giving help to these special needs students. They need help a lot. I'm a parent of a special needs child. She needs help every day at school. She needs help when she comes home. My wife and I try to give her the help she needs to do the homework, to get it done, and do it well, and learn. All this for 26 students? The description that discrepancies in other classes were insignificant, that seems to be a subjective term. I think the population for this survey was too small. I want to see more scores, more schools tested. I see I didn't prepare a lot, but there still seems to be a lot to be said. And I guess you meet again in two weeks. I'll be back.
Dr. Latham, any response to the audience presentations?
Yes. In response to the law firm, they actually report to the board. They do not report to me. As a superintendent for the school district and also my entire central administration staff, we take it responsibility for everything that happens under our watch. However, we've given principals a set of expectations that they must follow, and we've provided the training that principals must go back to their schools and provide to their teachers. When that doesn't happen, then, that poses a problem. As it relates to the self-reporting, we are responsible for self-reporting to the state. The state leaves it up to the school district to decide on discipline for staff if by chance there were irregularities or they did not follow the protocol. But it is our responsibility to self-report. Over the past several years, we have self-reported. Most of the self-reports occurred during the ISAT administration, and staff have been disciplined accordingly when there were problems. The purchasing agent was last here in District in 2007. That was under two comptroller treasures and one superintendent before, so I did not eliminate the purchasing department. We appreciate engagement from parents, but it's also important that you understand that we are all responsible, whether it was one student or 1,000 students. If protocols and procedures were not followed, they were not followed. For special education students, we are required to follow their IEPs. If we didn't follow the IEPs, we made a mistake, and we have to all accept responsibility for that mistake. We have not told children, especially the special ed children, that they did anything wrong. If anything, adults probably engaged in conversations with them, but we have not. And we're not blaming our special education students. We're blaming all of us as staff members here in the district. But once again, we're required by federal law to follow a student's IEP. And when we don't, there are other issues involved with that. So, as a superintendent, again, I accept responsibility, but I have to also hold principals accountable. It's interesting that you talk about fear, a sense of fear, but when we give principals expectations and they don't follow them, what are they fearing? But once again, we thank you for your comments, but we ask you to respect the information that was presented to you. But it was independent. It was, once again, the law firm reports to the board and not the superintendent, and they are not directed by me. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also...
What about the teachers? What about the teachers? Why are they still...
Just bear with us a moment, please. Ms. Ross.
You know, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
If you want to hear me. I've sat here tonight and before, and I've listened. I've taken in everything that people have said, but you know, what bothers me the most is that there have been adults here tonight in front of children that are present who call our schools inferior, which means our children are inferior. And that is... No. We do not have any schools that are inferior. We don't have any teachers that are inferior. And everybody deserves, everybody deserves to be treated with respect. I mean, it hurts me the most that your children are listening to you, and I mean, I tried to be quiet, but I'm saying, Dr. Latham did not initiate this process. She did not initiate the process. This came from one of our schools, Mark Bills. It's not an inferior school. You know, I know the principal there, I know the teachers there. It's not an inferior school. I mean, it's a matter of opinion, but...
Could you please...
I'm saying to the public, please know that your children, my children, are watching you. And that's fine, because I've been on this board long enough...
Let Mr. Wetterhauer come back to work tomorrow.
Go ahead.
Ms. Patel.
Go ahead.
Could you please...
No, it doesn't matter.
Find a sense of order here. Just bear with us. Ms. Patel.
I wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight. One of my favorite shows is Parks and Recreation, and in the first season, Leslie Knope said, "I don't hear yelling, I hear people caring really loud." And what I hear tonight is people caring really loud, and I appreciate that. For the students who came tonight, I hope that whatever the outcome is, you know that we are glad you are here. One of our responsibilities as a community, as a school district, is to turn you into citizens of a democracy. And what you are doing right now, sitting on benches, getting sore butts in a gym, is the messy work of democracy. There's shouting, there's yelling, sometimes it's very boring. But I really appreciate all of you children who came tonight to participate in this public work, and I hope that we will see you for many, many years in the public life of Peoria and maybe beyond. But we appreciate you coming, and we do hear you caring very loudly, whatever the outcome is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Crawford.
Ms. Todd, can you review again the comparisons made between the test scores at Charter Oak feeding into Mark Bills and Keller Lindberg, Northmore, Rolling Acres? And talk a little bit about the samples and how you drew about, came about those comparisons? And finally, in terms of examining the sampling of special education students at Charter Oak, were those all the kids, all the special education kids for Charter Oak during that time period?
I'll answer your second question first. Yes, we pulled all of the special education students at Charter Oak during that time period that then transferred to Mark Bills. But if I can pull up my charts yet again. So, to look through again, in looking at ISAT versus MAP and the percentile change in the reading portion of the ISAT and MAP assessment, the red, of course, reflects the ISAT, and the blue reflects the MAP. What we see is a dramatic decrease in percentile scoring on the ISAT as the students go from Charter Oak to Mark Bills. The current data is for current sixth grade students at Mark Bills. And now, again, for current seventh grade students at Mark Bills, we again see a dramatic decrease on ISAT percentile scoring on the reading portion of the ISAT test when compared to the MAP percentile change. Again, from sixth grade, we're seeing, and I'm having a hard time reading the percentages, I apologize, 41.8 percent decrease and a 4.0 percent decrease. And then, again, for seventh graders, again, a very large dramatic decline of 38.1 percent to an increase on MAP scores of 2.9.
What's it prove?
Then moving, moving quickly to the other feeder schools we compared this data to. So, Keller Primary, the special education students that flowed through Keller to Lindberg, and then from Northmore to Rolling Acres. We looked at identical data. And in looking at that data, we saw what we would expect, a correlation between ISAT scores and MAP scores in reading. So, you can see that we have somewhat of a significant correlation between those two buildings when compared to the Charter Oak data. Then finally, if you'd like me to go through MAP again, we're seeing the same... Now, I will note, in the seventh grade population at Mark Bills currently, we don't see as discrepant as a result in the math scores on the ISAT compared to the MAP. However, with the sixth graders, we are seeing that significant percentile drop on the ISAT math portion of the test compared to the MAP scores. And then again, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. So, basically, when you made the comparisons between the other schools, you were looking at the special education population of those schools as well?
Exactly.
Okay. And secondly, there was some talk about variables among special education students. Were the variances so great that you would expect that that would explain the differences in the two schools? In terms of, do the IEPs of those given student populations vary so much?
In the IEPs, in terms of eligibility and assessment accommodations for all of these students, of course, there will be some variance among students, but in looking at the students as a whole, we're looking at very similar disabilities cross-categorically among these schools, on students that are tested.
Thank you. Well, we're not taking questions from the audience. Thank you very much. We respect you, and we gave you an hour and 20 minutes of opportunity to comment, and we heard it. This is, just let me explain. This is not a question and answer period. And that's right. That's the way the board conducts its business. We need to move on.
You will be moving on.
Well...
You will be moving on, sir.
I would also add two things about financials. Just bear with us a moment here. Okay, we're going to get to that. We've had three years of financial reports on an operating level that this district was in the black. And to stand in front of us and say we're not managing our costs, our operations, is completely wrong. This organization has done a fine job of managing its finances. Number two, the purchasing card system, there was a detailed report on that about a month and a half to two months ago, an exhaustive report on it, which talked about the controls and the reconciliation of purchasing card items back to the line item and cost center for every single item that's purchased. On top of that, purchasing card purchases in the district represented about 3.5 percent of our total purchases. So, in perspective of this, when you look at it, we are managing the finances of this district appropriately and doing so under extreme pressures from the state of Illinois. And we have, and frankly, thank you, Mr. Knapp, that's very helpful.
How do you correlate this back to the financials? I don't see the correlation here.
There's none. There was a comment made here about the financial responsibility of this board, and I'm telling you that this board has done its job, and we have protected taxpayers' funds. So, with that in mind, I'm going to tell you one other thing here. We have a consent agenda, and we're going to vote on that consent agenda, and we have at least two items that we have to deal with in executive session. And after we deal with the other items on this agenda this evening, we're going to adjourn back to executive session and then come back in here if we have to, to close the meeting. So, I don't know how long that's going to take. I'm going to estimate it's going to be about an hour. That's the process we have to follow here. Thank you very much. Dr. Latham, could you speak to Remarkable Rule 1, 2, or 3? Number 3.
Number 4.
Number 3 is Dr. Kenny, I'm sorry. Any questions on spending over $2,500 for disorders? Thank you. Number 4, Dr. Latham.
Since our last board meeting report on December 16, 2013, we received eight new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, three were filled. There were four pending requests noted on the December 16, 2013 board report. Those were filled. We received eight requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. We now come to the consent agenda, and Mr. Crawford, would you read the consent agenda, please, for us?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's consent agenda consists of, I have number one, gifts to the school district at this meeting, $6,165.91 for a year-to-date total of $78,868.49. Proposed action, the Board of Education accept the following donations and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. Cookies valued at $35.91 by Hy-Vee to the Northmore PBIS Celebration. $2,000 by Glenn Fork to Richwoods ROTC and special education programs. Books valued at $3,000 by June Friddell to Heinz Primary School. $100 by Connie and Robert Erickson to Heinz Primary School. Books valued at $30 by Barbara Miller to Heinz Primary School. $1,000 by Kroger at Sterling Avenue to Woodrow Wilson. Donations totaling $25,950 were made to Peoria Public Schools Foundation Right Now Fund. Glenn and Polly Barton, $20,000. Patrick Gunn, $200. Chuck and Lori Weaver, $5,000. For Burt Parks, $300. Sue Ann Sharebaum, $100. Steve Lomier, $250. John and Nancy Crawford, $100. Two, payment of bills. Three, human resources report. The appointment, employment compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. I have number four, payment for travel. I have number five, field trip approval. Proposed action, the Board of Education approve the field trip to Richwoods Marine Corps ROTC program to travel to Camp Perry, Port Clinton, Ohio, February 19, 2014 through February 23, 2014, to compete in the JROTC Air Rifle Service Championship per board policy 6:240 as presented. The JROTC program will be funding lodging, transportation, and meals will be at the cadets' expense. No students will be denied attendance due to the inability to pay. I have number six, purchase of properties in the PHS area. Proposed action, the Board of Education is asked to approve the purchase of the following properties. 1811 North, pin number 18-04-103-026 for a value of $29,040. 1812 North North, pin number 18-04-102-005 at a price of $36,000. 410 West Nebraska, pin number 18-04-103-010 at a price of $30,300. 420 West Nebraska, pin number 18-04-103-006 at a price of $40,660. 424 West Nebraska, pin number 18-04-103-005 at a price of $25,000. And 430 West Nebraska, pin number 18-04-103-048 at a price of $48,000 for a total cost of $209,000. I have number seven, memorandum of understanding, local number 780. Proposed action, the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education, Peoria Public School District #150, and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFT/AFL, CIO pursuant to Senate Bill 7, Public Act 97-008. Mr. President, that concludes the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Would any member of the board like to have any of those items pulled? Ms. Wolfmeyer.
I'd like to have item number three, the human resources report, pulled and action deferred until we return from executive session.
Does any board member object to that? Then we will do that. Could we have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved, that we accept the consent agenda except for number three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Any discussion or questions?
Dr. Kenny? If you could explain a little bit about the purchase of properties in the PHS area, where is the resource, where's the source for those funds?
Okay, we're paying for those out of the Capital Projects Fund, and the purpose of those purchases is to be able to expand our athletic endeavors around Peoria High. This does not include football, just to make that clear.
Ms. Wolfmeyer.
Another question about that. These are monies that are designated for Peoria High, have to be used at Peoria High for some type of capital development.
Well, what's going to happen is, we do have somebody that is going to fund the athletic fields, and yes, they are limited to spending their money at Peoria High.
And one other thing. Dr. Lathan, could you brief us quickly on what the Memorandum of Understanding is with the union?
Yes, Senate Bill 7 requires district administration and our teachers' union to reach an agreement as it relates to our reduction in force, as it relates to the groups that teachers will be placed in once their final evaluations are complete. The change this year with our Memorandum of Understanding, if a teacher, for the very first time, receives a needs improvement, instead of being placed into Group 2, which is automatic by Senate Bill 7, they will have an opportunity to be placed in Group 3.
This Memorandum of Understanding was reached with the collaboration of a union, correct?
Yes, and the union president signed off on it, yes.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? Dr. Kenny?
One correction to make, I apologize for this. In the second line, it's 1812 North Ellis. The PIN number is correct, but it is North Ellis, not North North.
Do we deal with that as amended?
It's how you read it.
Okay, so it's there. Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? There being none, Madam Clerk, Madam Secretary, I'd say. Would you call a roll?
Aye.
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 The deliberation agenda, item number 8.
That the review of suspensions listed on the report dated January 13, 2014, be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item 9.
Proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated January 13, 2014 be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item 10, expulsions.
The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated January 13, 2014 be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Any presentation or suggestions by board members at this moment? Any reports from board committees? We are going to adjourn to an executive session. Like I said, we have at least two items to deal with. We will come back, and we need to do that as a motion, yes. So could I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Yes, I would move that we adjourn to executive session.
For the purpose of appointment, employment, dismissal of personnel.
For purposes of appointment, employment, and dismissal of personnel.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 We will return here for open session as soon as we can. Well, thank you for sticking with us here. I need a motion to reopen the meeting, the public meeting.
So moved.
Madam Secretary.
Here. I'm sorry, are we here? Aye.
This is aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Crawford.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Crawford.
Okay, thank you. We wanted to do two things here. One of them is that we've come to the decision that there will be no decision on Mr. Wetterhauer and his situation until after he is given the opportunity to respond to the final report that you heard about tonight. And to respond to the board as to what the findings said. That's it.
Okay, I'm going to do two quick Roberts Rules-type motions. The first is, I move that we amend the Human Resources Report to include the confirmation of dismissal of Curtis Daley from several months ago.
Second.
Any discussion? None on that. Madam Secretary.
Aye. Ms. Patel. Aye. Ms. Patel. Aye.
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 Ms. Patel.
And then I will move that we adopt the Human Resources Report as amended.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned.